Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Superintendent, Board members, Mr. Vice Chairman. This item is the formally required step that we take after the budget has been proposed to y'all by the superintendent, which took place at our last meeting. And this is an interim step between passing tentative, which is legally required, and then going to final. The final is scheduled, of course, for a 7:00 call meeting on the 21st of June. As we have discussed previously, your package contains 35 pages of two summary pages in the front and then a lot of detail relative to each division or each fund's anticipated revenue and appropriated expenses. You can see from the first page, we have the required number of six funds, the first fund being our general K-12 fund. And as y'all have heard us discuss previously, this proposed FY '17 budget anticipates revenue totaling $955,230,000 and anticipates expenditures of $954,983,000. It does not include any of the projected fund balance amount for the end of '16, which is $124.389 million. It's our best internal estimate, and those internal estimates have proven to be pretty accurate as we go forward. You can see you have your general fund, your special revenue fund, which is primarily grant funding. That fund is projected to receive total revenue of $99.9 million and to have total expenditures of about $100.2 million, or it will produce a deficit if these numbers take place during FY '17 of $7.8 million. But you know there are all these timing issues relative to the grant funds, and these numbers will change substantially or could change substantially as we get started during the year. You have a debt service fund of $1,332,000. That is debt service under $33 million of GO SPOLOs bonds issued a few years ago. Those bonds will have a balloon payment coming due in FY '17 of about $33 million. We have a capital outlay fund, which is sales tax, and that SPOLOs funding moves over under debt service for the debt service payment. School nutrition and athletics is combined to keep us within our board policy on the number of funds we should have. You can see that's about $63 million in terms of total funds available, but most of that, of course, is school nutrition. About $1 million, and that is athletics. And the trust and agency fund, which you see every year, is about $17,724,000. It is primarily for Medicare coverage, FICA, long-term disability, and various other benefits that we make available to the workforce. All in all, you'll see that we have an all-funds budget that we anticipate expending about We project a fund balance as of June 30, '17 in the future against all of those various funds of about $413,176,000. So together, those two total funds allocated is $1,637,917,000. And of course, as I said earlier, we have advertised the final budget and miller rate setting vote for June 21st. As you've heard us discuss previously, the structure of the general fund is based upon 23.73 mills right now. As we've discussed earlier today, we're headed in collections right now based on our '16 presentation. So that is, this first page is what we call a consolidated budget page, is labeled tentative budget because that's a legal step we're asking you to take this afternoon. Any questions? Well, if there are any questions, I'll entertain them on the first page at this point, or I can go into what we call the T-sheet on the general fund, which is the second page.
I don't see any lights on, so move ahead. I'm sorry.
I just want to make a statement. Thank you so much, Dr. Bell, Dr. Green. This is a far cry from when I came on the board three years ago, and when it was dismal gloom and everything else. And just to be able to be here now and see where we are, it just shows when we really, really put our minds together and we work for what we're here to do, that we can get to this point. I think it's still important that we're prudent to recognize that history does repeat itself and that we don't want to ever go back there again. And we have to make sure that we're doing the things and being, I don't want to use the word transparent because I think it's used too loosely, be honest, open, and clear about what we do and be able to have the public to keep that trust and that faith in us and that we do what we're here to do is educate children. But I'm just so pleased to see this because I was really at a dismal place three years ago, almost four years ago, and now to see this, it makes me a real happy camper.
Thank you, Dr. Marley. Dr. Irwin?
Dr. Bell, I just had a couple of questions on the T-sheet as far as appropriations by division.
You haven't gotten to the T-sheet yet.
That would be the...
Dr. Irwin, he has not presented the T-sheet yet, so if you wait just a moment, you want to hold your question to then, or you want to ask a question now relative to the summary?
Well, I thought he said he could answer questions on either one.
Well, I can, but...
He can.
He can, after he's gone over it.
You can take it either way, it doesn't make a difference to me.
Okay. We'll just wait until he presents, and you'll be the first one we get back to, okay? To your question, okay?
Thank you. Okay, the second page in, of course, is what we call the T-sheet, which is the left side is revenue, and the right side of the T is appropriations or expenses. As you can see, starting in the top left, our FY '15 ending fund balance, and that number is pretty well audited now by the state auditors, we're showing a $92,839,000 for the general fund, okay? We estimate we'll collect total revenue in '16 of $911,850,000, and we will spend $880,300,000. So the difference between the collections and the expenditures, and that added back to the '15 fund balance, produces mathematically, and this is also an internal financial construct, a fund balance going into '17 of $124,389,000. Going further down the left side of the page, you can see we normally divide our revenue components between local and state. The projected local revenue for FY '17 is now at $497,427,000. And then based upon communications from the state and projections of QBE growth, on the QBE side, we're anticipating $457,596,000. So if you add those two subtotals together, exclusive of the fund balance, you get the $955,23,939 available to fund our general fund budget, not touching the fund balance as we go forward, okay? Moving to the right side of the T, you can see we have a layout by division, and we start with the base '16 budget of $874 million. Y'all approved mid-year adjustments of $17,963,000. That gave us a resulting $892,453,000 budget for '16. That's the budget that will end on June 30th. We're just sort of laying out where we were, say, with schools. After mid-year, the current '16 budget for schools was $620,862,000. When we take the items we've built into this budget at the superintendent's direction, that school number will increase to $653,989,000, okay, for the school component of the general fund budget. Now, going down to the bottom of the right side of the page, you can see if ketebus paribus, all of these numbers happen exactly as printed, okay, and we know that doesn't always happen, then we will spend, we spend all of our expenses as indicated, and we take in exactly the revenue as indicated, okay? The net impact will be in a $40,000 step up in our fund balance, okay? But you know, just take a look at the top left as to how we normally work it. We project, we collect more revenue than we project, and we spend less expenses than we anticipate, okay, than we appropriate, excuse me, okay? So the effect of those two vectors, okay, recreates the fund balance, and so we think, you know, depending upon the ultimate structure of the budget as it's decided upon, you know, we should be able to continue to add to the fund balance. However, we know we've got some liabilities, there's some legal issues we're working on. We'll see how that, how the courts decide on that type of thing. And there's also some evidence of a flattening and a slowing in the economy. We've all heard about the May jobs report, $38,000, $38,000 jobs created, very disappointing, will probably mean the Fed will not increase or bump short-term interest rates on June 14th as we go forward. And relative to metro Atlanta and the north part of metro Atlanta, there's some indication of a slowing of job creation in metro Atlanta, certainly a slowing in terms of, in some areas, housing permits issued, okay? It will take some time before that slowing has a measurable impact on our digest. We've worked with the tax assessors, have projected a 4% increase in total digest values, okay? Of course, as you know, under Georgia law, when you have such a projected increase, that some part of it is reassessments, you have to advertise a property tax increase. We have done that legally in the district's legal organ, at about 8.7%. There have been some revisions to the numbers we have used, and so it looks like it will come in less than that, 6% or 7%. That's good. You want to advertise and then come in below it. You don't want to advertise and come in above it, okay? This evening at 6:15, we have our first miller rate hearing, where y'all are taking the appropriate steps to keep the miller rate at 23.73, but you're maintaining your options, you're not setting it, but you're maintaining your options as you go down the road. And we come up to a final vote on the actual budget structure and the miller rate on the 21st of June at the 7:00 meeting. This particular budget, if you look at the bottom of the right side, includes certain specific things the superintendent directed that it contained. It includes a 3% pay raise for all employees, all full-time employees, that's $19.4 million. Growth in school teacher allotments, that means we're still increasing our FTEs, $16.1 million. $2.8 million for the new Brooklyft-Dewitt Hills Elementary School. $870,000 for signing bonuses for HCM and for retention bonuses, $2.9 million. There's mandated state classified health insurance premium increases of $1,840. General fund, Dr. Green wanted us to have a specific general fund contingency amount, a substantial amount, more than the approximate $2 million that we've carried in previous years. We've got that at $6.5 million of true contingency. We also have in our transfers the $2 million plus, so we're about at $9 million in terms of a sort of a real reserve as we go into the year. The regional support initiative and other growth and discretionary spending at about $20.7 million. The 403B 2% match program that y'all approved a year or so ago, the take rate on that has put us to where we anticipate the 2% match will be about $4 million for all of '17. So that's growing, it's more than we had set aside or had to set aside in the previous year. We have a summer school program anticipated in '17, $2,170,000, and $1,898,000 for CIA squared, a very important initiative that the superintendent has begun relative to establishing a curriculum that is needed. So with all that being said, you've got an anticipated revenue excluding of the fund balance of $955,23,000. We have appropriated expenses estimated $954,983,000. It's the, we have the largest fund balance we've ever had right now, but we also have the largest general fund budget we've ever had, okay, as we go forward. So the district is growing and we're adding pay options to the workforce, which of course, that should help us retain the teachers, the experienced teachers that we need to retain. So that is the comments on the T-sheet, Dr. Irwin, so we're ready to entertain any questions you might have.
Dr. Irwin, you have the first question.
Okay. The first thing I wanted to look at was the school board appropriations, and I see a reduction of about $1.3 million, and wanted to know how that came into play.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
The school board budget, how it decreased from last year to this year?
Yeah, that is primarily an anticipated reduction in legal fees, okay? But as things turn out, you know, we'll see how that flows out, but that's basically a legal fee reduction.
Okay. The other one is facilities and operations. I see we've increased that by about $11 million, and just curious about what we're getting for that $11 million.
You're in the middle of the T-sheet page, facilities and operations, boom, boom, boom. I see that. That, I think, and I could ask Mr. Williams to assist me here, that is some of the extra resources or additional resources for the regional reorganization effort?
Yes, sir. A large portion of that is in regards to the question that came up earlier about deferred maintenance. As part of the effort, you all received in your board packets for the communique an overview of our executive summary specifically related to our facility condition assessment. You know, if we had a magic wand, we would ask for the billion dollars that we need, but we wanted to start somewhere so that we can provide better support to our schools specifically related to the deferred maintenance needs that we have. So roughly about $8 million, $7 or $8 million of this is specifically directed to allow for regional funds to support the deferred maintenance effort for each school. And then the other portion, of course, is relative to what Dr. Bell mentioned, concern in salary increases and benefits, as he mentioned earlier today.
Is that part of the priority list that you're going to ask schools about as you go forward?
This is separate from that. There is an opportunity to look at that in conjunction with the facility condition assessment that we've already completed. We've asked the schools, specifically the principals and the councils, to weigh in on that list and that information, and so we have that data, and we'll use that to develop those initiatives under each region as we move forward.
And just one last question that Dr. Bell brought up. How is it, I know you talked about, just spoke about $11 million for facilities and operations. What about the other part of the $20 million discrepancy fund? Where does that fall in play under those categories?
You mean discretionary fund, Dr. Irwin? The $20.7 million? Some component of the $20 million is relative to the regional reorganization effort, okay? Some other component under non-salary discretionary is associated with just requests that came in in this budget. If you go up above into the major block of the T-sheet, you see non-salary discretionary, okay? You can see that the part associated with schools is by $15.5 million. You can see the other increases above that that make up the discretionary area. We did get, you know, $150 million in discretionary requests, and that, of course, is sort of a fulcrum in how we restructure the budget every year after you cover your base expenses.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bell.
Thank you, Dr. Irwin. Mr. Orson, Mrs. Turner?
I think I was next.
No, I've already given my name before, sorry. Couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
And I guess may also be for Josh. On the deferred maintenance and repairs, I'd love at some point to get a better understanding kind of our system behind that, because that's, I think, probably every board member gets, you know, we send them to you, like, the window's not fixed, the toilet's not working, and to sort of integrate that with, as we, I think, appropriately increase the budget, how this, and I know you can't answer it today, but I got another session about how this works so that we're building confidence in the public that things are actually getting repaired.
Yeah, I think our system is going to get better, but I think, I mean, the clear, we have to be very candid here, and Mr. Williams made reference to it. We're in a deferred maintenance mode, which is really basically reactionary mode. We don't have, you know, we need another billion dollars to be, to move into a preventive maintenance mode. And that, so we're behind eight ball every day in terms of trying to really, and you prefer, Dr. Moore, to patching up some things. That's really where we are. We're trying to keep things kind of maintained, you know, mostly in a responsive. Now, we got to do better in the turnaround of the response, and Mr. Williams is leading that charge and doing a better job in terms of customer service when we know something is broken and needs to be fixed. But to get on the other side of the whole curve, to get into anticipating when it's going to break and having the resources three, four years down the line to actually say, this is going to break in three or four years, and we're going to replace it right before it breaks, that's where we want to get, but that's a hard climb, to be honest.
Okay, a few, thank you. I mean, I know, do you want to add to that, because I have a couple other questions?
No, I think Dr. Green did a good job on it, and certainly in the maintenance spectrum. I mean, he did a great job, thank you, sir.
Great.
And not to mention preventative maintenance, our intent, yeah, really, our intent is really to get to what we call predictive maintenance, and that's where we can get way in front of it, and we're able to actually predict based on our capital renewal schedules when we need to actually do exactly what he just described. When is it right time, and when is the financial capability right to replace that unit instead of doing any type of repairs? And that's the work that we're trying to get toward.
And if I'm just to add before you, my next question, I think one, and I know you struggle with this, is one of the issues is, I think there's a feeling, whether it's always justified or not, that we should fix it once and it be fixed, and that the way our system has operated at times, the fixes have not even always been effective, and therefore, we decrease our efficiency and efficacy because we're going back, you know. So again, not, I don't want to put you on the spot today, but I think a kind of a global view at some point can be helpful, because that is, quite frankly, board members, probably every one of us, get those calls and emails and stop in the supermarket about, you know, and that is all you, but to the extent we have a better understanding of the system and where we're going, I think we'll be more effective in being able to communicate with people. Next question, I want to talk about the 403B. So you've got an anticipation of, anticipation of a match of $4 million, which quite frankly, to me, seems low, not that you're estimating low, but that our take rate, I mean, I'm a big believer in retirement plans, and so, given what I kind of in my head estimate to be our overall salary as a potential match, so my first question is, if everyone were to take at the maximum rate, the 2% match or whatever that maximum, what would that number look like? Because I'm just sort of curious as to where we are compared to where we could be in a world in which everyone fully availed themselves of the plan.
Well, as you recall, Mr. Orson, there were about, when we did the calculation on the qualified group of employees, okay, we originally were working from a previous year's number of about $10 million. We initiated the program at mid-year, and we set aside $5 million, okay? And I want to say we ended up maybe using between $2 and $3 million of the five. But based on the ongoing sign-ups for the entire year of '17, we're putting in place $4 million. So if that $4 million is 2% of what gross salary number that people are committing 2% off of, that's about $200 million. $4 million is 2% of $200 million in salary.
So, no, I understand that. What my question is, if people were to max out to fully avail themselves of the program based on how we've designed the program, because, and I think I've shared this when we're going through, I think these retirement programs are great. I think employee funded with employer matches to incent people are important. So I want to know, I'm curious to know what the gap is between the take, the real take rate and where people are participating. One, because it would be helpful to know what our upside exposure is, and two, it would also, I think, help inform us about, are there some areas we need to do a better job to encourage employees to participate? You know, people are just bad at saving for retirement, quite frankly, and I think it is one of our responsibilities as an employer to try to do everything, not only to provide the mechanisms, but to encourage people to participate in them. So the $4 million I get is what you anticipate. I'd like to know, if everyone actually fully availed themselves of it, what is that number?
10.
10, okay. So we're at about 40%. So to me, we should be striving to go towards a 10, quite frankly. I see that as a positive in terms of that, and I just at some point would love to hear about what, again, what steps we might be taking, particularly for our lower-paid employees, because that's the hardest thing for people who aren't making as much to save for retirement, and those are the people who are the most vulnerable to not having retirement funds. And so, you know, again, that's not for today, the top number is just a question for today. Third question, this has been something, this predates your coming to the system, but I think it sort of is partially in Dr. Irwin's question. So our school board budget always looks very high if you don't know that baked in there are a lot of our legal expenses in there. And so, I mean, to me, there's an operational board budget, and there's legal fees, and I would like, and then there's your department's costs, which has some of this in there and some of it in there, and I think we don't do a good job of communicating to the public about the cost of legal services, because, and we overstate the cost of us, quite frankly, as a school board. I mean, we look like we're costing $4 million a year, and either we're costing a billion dollars a year because we're responsible for it all, or we're costing something less. And I think at the same time, we don't get an accurate depiction of the cost of legal services and related. And I would ask that in our, in doing this, perhaps we reconfigure this so we're clear on both sides, because, and this is a question we've asked before, and quite frankly, prior to your administration, it was a way stuff kind of got hidden, quite frankly, in terms, particularly in the legal expenses for years, which were astronomically high. And so that would be my one request before we get to a final budget, perhaps you would look at something that represented these figures that were, there's the board, again, the board operational budget, and there's the legal related costs.
I think we can disaggregate and break it out in clear categories so people can see exactly what's what.
Yes, sir. That can certainly be broken out. If you look on page three, you'll see the legal affairs budget. Now, this includes workers' comp, is proposed at $11,589,000. Okay, workers' comp's in there at about $7 million, and then here the rest of the insurance costs, risk management, that type of thing, okay? Now, that is separate from the board budget. Your, but we could look at, the historic legal reason is, of course, is because under Georgia law, the legal primity of contract was outside council or council is with the board.
I understand, well, you know, that's true. Basically, all legal affairs ultimately are under the board, though there's the operational, you know, we get in, I don't want to get into the governance part of it. I just think we need a better way to represent the costs, both so that people understand what it costs for this part of it and what it costs whether it's under the legal council's office budget or the board budget, that there's probably a better way to, I think, to represent this, so there's people get a clearer understanding of the associated costs of each of those functions. Because again, I think you make a good point. Some of those, I think baked in the legal council are settlements, their other fee, right? So we're, we've really just kind of thrown stuff together in a way that I don't think is very clear to the public, that it doesn't cost $11 million for Jennifer's Department per se, because she's, I know she's shaking her head about, it's not in her salary. And so I think we, there's a better way for us to represent what kind of what I would call our sort of legal, maintaining legal costs, our board costs, and then our legal exposure through settlements and through litigation-related fees. And then the last thing, and you touched on this on about the milit rate, and I know we'll also have a milit rate hearing, I know that our initial stage is to preserve our flexibility in terms of where our milit rate is, and I know we've at least had some preliminary discussions and at least exploring whether there's room, appropriate room, to make adjustments in that, given where, how we got to our current milit rate, which was as part of the financial crisis that existed, the board before us raised the milit rate by a full mill in order to close our budget gap, and I think as we move forward in this process, this is just something we should at least be entertaining and discussing. So that's it for my comments. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Turner?
Just want to make sure Mr. Orson is finished. Just teasing. I just got a couple of questions, Dr. Bell. I just want to be sure, as far as it's been mentioned, that all staff, and when we say all staff, that's campus-wide, department-wide, are eligible for a raise, is that correct? Am I correct in that understanding? Everyone will be receiving a raise?
All full-time employees are getting the 3%. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Except for the board.
All full-time employees, okay? The next one, and that's been outlined, that's a part of the budget, we already have that in there, right?
Yes.
The retention bonuses, who qualifies for retention bonuses?
That's an initiative of Human Capital Management.
Right.
Dr. Brown, I'm sure is.
My computer just goes.
And he's having computer problems, hang on.
Okay.
All current teachers receive a $1,000 signing bonus for, that's the retention bonus, rather, not signing bonus, staying bonus, the retention bonus for signing a contract and returning for the next school year, and that's going to be paid after the first quarter of the next school year. So they have to sign and stay in order to get it.
You kind of whispered that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But all teachers, full-time teachers who sign and remain with us will receive a $1,000 signing bonus after the first quarter.
Retention bonus, yes.
Okay, retention bonus, okay. All teachers understand that? Has that been thoroughly communicated?
The bonus, the budget hasn't been.
Budget hasn't been approved, so we couldn't really.
Okay, so, but they'll be made aware of that soon, right?
Once you all vote on, after.
I don't, I don't see that holding up the budget.
June 22nd.
Okay, okay. Because we, we don't want to lose any in-between, is what I'm trying, maybe why I'm doing this on the mic.
June 22nd.
I, I don't want to lose any teachers, okay? And then, does the budget reflect any, all the new positions, Dr. Green? I know you sent us out the, the new organizational charts by department. I just want to look at, and, and I'm grateful for the fund balance and what it looks like right now, but I know, I'm thinking of things in terms of my own personal life, and usually when I think I got a little extra money, I start spending, and I spend, and then I find out I'm having a deficit again. So I don't want us to go that route.
Not.
Not so. All right. That's what my husband said too, Dr. Green, but, but sometimes. But anyhow, what I'm trying to say is, have we solidified our hiring? I know we need teachers, bottom line, but I'm talking about in terms of our central office, the, the regional model that we're having, do we have still many positions to fill? Have they been factored into the budget? Have we outlined what those positions will be? Will we cap those positions at some point and say, enough hiring, not, I'm exempting teachers, enough hiring administratively, because, and I want to say this, I want to qualify this. One of the prevailing opinions out there in the public has been that we're top-heavy. Whether it's true or not, it's out there. It's been that we're top-heavy and that we continue to, to replenish in the top. And so what we want to do is, is make sure that we, we, we bring, reel things in, and that the resources that we have are continuing to trickle down into our schoolhouse. I know Mr. Jester will give me a hearty amen on that, that we make that 65% rule. But I'm just saying, at what point do we say enough hiring administratively, we've sealed that? Are we there yet?
Let me assure you that the, the goal was to build the, the team that I wanted in place, to have it in place and in position by June 30th, we're ahead of schedule, that team is in place.
Okay.
The structure, the reorganization phases one, two, and three have been complete, and that structure, including not only the regional structure, decentralized structure with micro cabinets for the regional superintendent, that is in place and in operation as we speak, absent any vacancies that, or someone leaves to, to fill a place that's, that's, that's been vacated for someone else to come in, we don't, we don't need to hire anymore to fulfill the infrastructure that's in place right now.
So we're done?
We're done.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. McMahon?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I appreciate all the hard work with the budget, gentlemen. Just, I want to make a comment regarding our facility needs and the, and the financial health of our system. I know we have over a billion in needs, 1.9, I think, is the total, but just on maintenance is like a billion. We have gotten to a point where we have a fund balance. I look forward to our further conversations about restricted fund balance, rainy day. But I'd also want to say that as interest rates are at historic lows, that I, I would be a proponent for doing things right and doing them once, and if we need funding for it, additional funding to go to the equity markets for, for a bond issue or something to address it, I just want to let you know I'm open to that idea to address, and I wish Dr. Morley was here, was, just to address our district concerns in its, in their totality, and not push it off, push it off. If we're going to do it, let's do it. And if we can do it, let's do it as much as we can the first time, right now, as we're heading down this path. So that's where I am on, on our financing and our facility needs. Pertaining to this year's budget and for fiscal 17, Dr. Green, would you be able to supply in the Friday packets? As we talk about all our teachers and retaining teachers, I would ask that we have a lot of, we've got a lot of different classifications for teachers, and would it be possible to get a head count of the classes that we have where the teacher's name is on the roll call? Does that make sense? To where, pick any school, there may be 60 teachers there, but there may be, I'm just pick a number, a different number of teachers that its names are actually on the roll for that class. Does that make sense?
I think, let me see where you're going with, with the.
And I'm just looking for an assessment of how many teachers do we have in a classroom that are actually in charge of that class? And I think that would give me a better perspective of our frontline forces versus supplemental support, if that can be produced.
Are you talking about a, a chart or a grid that indicates each, the teacher of record for every class in this, in the school system? Is that what you're talking about?
Do we have that, yes.
Let's, let's talk.
Just work on it, yeah. Appreciate that.
The time they would take to collect.
Appreciate it. And back to the T-shirt, I greatly appreciate the actuals from '14, '15, and '16 in relation to where we're going in '17. I do think it is prudent for us to do a better job of communicating to the public of how we spend our dollars and what we're budgeting for. I was going to ask if the board could get, just from our standpoint, what our last couple of years has looked like from our budgeted amounts versus our actual expenditures, just on the board side, from our five pages?
Yeah.
Got it?
Yeah.
And that's it for me. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Mr. Jester?
Back in May, we talked about the signing bonus and retention bonus, and maybe I was reading that wrong, but I thought it said, all current teachers will receive a $500 staying bonus.
You are correct. I was looking above, when we were talking about regions one, two, and three, and the signing bonuses. In an effort for me to get everything up, I looked at the wrong line item, and I did have a note to bring that back up, and it is a $500 retention bonus, not $1,000, so I apologize for that mistake.
It will be $1,000. Do you want to talk about the signing bonus real quick?
Mm-hmm. I can, I can talk about the signing bonuses as well. It's based upon region and subject area, with special emphasis on our hard-to-feel schools and our hard-to-feel regions.
The amount is?
Sure, so.
The signing, what?
The, in regions.
The retention bonus is five.
Yes, retention bonus is five. Signing bonus is different based upon the subject area and region, with the teachers that are teaching in our high-need areas, subject areas, and high-need schools that are hard to feel will get more money, but every teacher that is hired will get something.
And that's a minimum?
From $1,000 to $3,000.
$3,000, okay. Good.
The floor is $1,000.
Floor is $1,000, $3,000, correct.
Good, good, good. And I'd also like to take this time to thank the taxpayers for everything that they've done over the last few years. In 2014, we were taking in only $788 million annually, but over the last couple of years, that's grown, and that's increased to about $200 million. It's increased by almost $200 million. So we have the second highest milit rate in the state, and the taxpayers have dug in deep into their pockets to help bail us out of those problems that we were in three or four years ago. So it's, I would like to thank them tremendously for that. And traditionally, we've had a detailed budget, you know, that 2,000-page document that we've had. Mr. Bell, Dr. Bell?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And that's about 1,700 pages that we're working on right now, and that will be posted as soon as y'all take action. This 35 pages, it's sort of a high-level story, but.
So it's in process?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good, good, good. And on a slightly side note, gifted students, Mr. Brown, do you know if we have enough gifted teachers to provide the gifted services that we're required to by law?
Well, off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but I can give you that information.
Not sure. Okay, that's fine. Actually, I'm not asking for information, it just came to my attention that I think we could get more funding if we had more gifted teachers, obviously. Some schools are way understaffed with gifted teachers compared to the number of gifted students they have. So somehow if we can get more gifted teachers at these particular schools, I think we could increase our funding by, what, 50%, or at least by state funding. Thanks.
Okay, Dr. Bell?
Yes, sir.
Have you completed, have you finished?
I completed my presentation.
Your presentation, okay.
Just one quick question?
One last quick question?
Yeah, I was just going to, you made a comment about the detailed budget. Will the board receive that prior to, during our review process at all?
Well, we could see where we are with the 1,600 pages right now, and see if we can get you, get you that, okay?
Yes, 1,600 pages will be available on the website tomorrow.
Thank you, thank, yeah. No, no, good, I'm good, thank you.
Very good. Is there any opposition to placing this item on the consent agenda for this evening? Here it now, this item will be placed on the consent agenda for this evening.